Good evening and welcome to the City of Isanty City Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 2nd. Seating may be limited. If you would like to send in a comment for public comment or public hearing to be read on your behalf, please submit those to our wonderful city clerk, Ms. Jaden Strand at JayStrand@cityofIsanty.us, or you can just call her at 763-762-5759. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, four council members are physically present and one is on the telephone, Councilman Dan Collison. Is there any public comment at this time? Step up to the podium, sir. Just push the mic there so it turns green and then state your name and address for the record.
My name is Chris Page. My address is 1785 132nd Lane Northeast in Blaine. I'm going to apologize right before I even start here. Two hours ago, I did not know that I was going to be here and so my thoughts might be a little bit disorganized. If that's the case, again, I apologize. To give you a little bit of background, again, my name is Chris Page. I'm the owner and operator of PJ's Grill Food Truck. We're based out of Blaine. And we've recently been asked to serve at Thunder Brothers Brewing. Through that process, I've learned a little bit about the City of Isanty's ordinances regarding mobile food units, regarding food trucks, and just wanted to talk a little bit about the process. I feel that the process and the application process, both the process itself and the cost involved, I feel need to be updated. As we look at it, there are a number of different variations from city to city, county to county regarding food trucks and how they're handled, how they're licensed, things like that. Unfortunately, a lot of these things complicate the process and they become very confusing. The application process here in Isanty, you're one of a few cities that still requires a background check. And in discussing this earlier today, some of the points that were made, really were being lumped in as a transient merchant. But the truth is, we're not transient. We're local. We're invested in our local communities. We're not a fly-by-night salesman who comes in blowing through town after a hailstorm to try and sell siding. You know, we're here. We're based in this area. In all honesty, most food trucks won't drive more than about 20 or 30 minutes out of their way to go to serve just because the cost becomes increasingly high. So we are local. We're invested in our communities. Having the background check creates an additional cost for us, which is an extra hurdle for us to overcome. In particular, as an example, the $75 background check cost here in Isanty, I don't pay that much to be licensed in many communities. So it provides an additional hurdle for us to overcome. Beyond that, the cost itself of the license, Isanty is one of the highest cost, or one of the highest-priced licenses anywhere in the state at this point. I can be licensed by the state to cover the entire state from the Department of Health for $290 a year. I can be licensed in, for example, the City of Coon Rapids for $100 a year. I can be licensed in, in fact, I can go to White Bear Lake, Maple Grove, Forest Lake, Bethel, Ham Lake without any licensing requirement, any cost at all. Unfortunately, here in Isanty, the license costs $200 for a six-month period. It's more than double, in fact, in some cases quadruple what other cities are charging. We want to come and serve your community. I love the City of Isanty. I've spent considerable time here just living 25 minutes south. We want to serve your residents and your residents clearly want us here. The small businesses that we serve, they want us here. We want to be a part of your community. We want to be invested in your community. Food trucks are a draw for a lot of different businesses. We build up the businesses that we serve and that we partner with. And again, we're wanted. You know, it's, we help build up the economy. We help support local businesses. We pay local sales tax, so we contribute to the tax base. We want to be here just as much as anybody wants us here. So the problem is, though, when we have obstacles such as the additional background check, which, I don't have a problem passing a background check. I came from a cop's family of 31 years and I have no problem passing a background check, but it's just another obstacle, it's another hoop, and it's an additional cost. Then when you combine that with the extra $200 for every six months, it becomes restrictive. It becomes difficult for us to justify coming to a city that charges us and has those hoops to jump through when we have plenty of cities to go to that don't have those hoops, that don't have those additional costs. So it's something that I just wanted to present to the council as maybe something that you could look into, maybe something we can look at to try to revise the ordinance, maybe get it so that we are no longer considered a transient peddler or a transient merchant within the city and be able to break away from that a little bit and to make the process more simplified and less costly so that we can come and serve the residents of your community.
Well, for a guy with only two hours, I think you did pretty good.
I have a question.
Sure.
Most cities, you pay $35 for that background check? Is that right?
It varies from city to city. Most cities are around $30. You know, and again, this is part of the redundancy, right? Like, we, I've had a background check done on me probably six times in the last 12 months. So again, that cost builds up, but most cities, it's around $30.
So, and I'm not saying this could happen, I'm going to facetiously speak here, is we went to $30, let's say that. That background check, we're doing because, in all honesty, we're protecting our residents.
Sure.
I don't, potentially, I don't want, and forgive me for saying so, but I'm just going to speak the truth here.
Nope, absolutely.
If you're a sex offender and you're serving food, or you've been convicted of a food tampering charge or what have you, we'd like to know that because I don't want you serving our residents because, you know, they're potentially our children.
Absolutely. And we've been presented with that in the past as well. Just so, to give a little bit of background on where I come from, I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Minnesota Food Truck Association. So we've been working on this with different communities over the last couple of years. And we've had that argument presented as well. And I guess the pushback that I would give is, do you run that same background check on every business owner who opens up a business in your city? Anyone who wants to open a McDonald's franchise, Subway, a local deli?
No, I don't think we do. We don't run a background check on every business owner, do we?
Chief, do we?
No, I don't think we did.
So that would be, that would be my challenge to you then. That would be my pushback is, if you're not doing it for these other local businesses, then why is it important to do it for us when we're based locally as well?
But here's, here's one other thing. When you look at that, you come here and open a business. You're paying taxes for that business to be here, okay?
Sure.
A food truck comes and goes. They don't pay tax to the city.
Well, we pay local sales tax.
You pay a local sales tax, but we don't have a local sales tax in the City of Isanty. Cambridge has an added local sales tax.
Sure.
This city does not, so you would not be paying.
Okay, you'd be paying the state tax.
Right.
But as a business, just take Junction Bowl, for example. He has a business here. He's paying taxes.
Sure.
All the time, every day. You know, cumulatively over the year, you come for two days, your truck leaves, you're gone, okay? And there again, like Mayor Johnson stated, when you, that's why it fits in that category of a peddler's license, is that you are, we're doing our diligence for our residents and our community. I don't know who you are, you don't really know who I am. But until you do that, it's hard for, all of a sudden, our citizen says, hey, I know who this guy is, you know, he's such and such and so-and-so. We didn't know this.
Sure.
And all of a sudden, it's given us a bad blemish on us as a council and as the city, as a whole. So when we do that background check, it is, you know, looked into. And FYI, Mayor Johnson had called me yesterday about, about this because he had questioned it.
Sure.
And I was in a meeting today here at City Hall and I discussed it with our city administrator. And we are going to look at what, you know, what it actually costs us to do that check and be fair about it.
As long as we cover overhead costs of our staff, I don't have a problem with.
I don't.
I don't think this council would have a problem.
What did we charge you for background check? I didn't care.
$75.
We charged $75. I don't know, but.
But even, what he's stating is even like our fees.
No, I get that. There's a fee on top of that.
Potentially high.
But, but Councilman Gordon sat through when we discussed all this, and you thought what we were charging was fair. And I think that $200 wasn't, Ms. Wood, wasn't that for the whole year?
No, that's for six months.
It's for six months, no matter how many times you would come. Otherwise, it's $25 per time.
So potentially, somebody would be paying $400 for a year.
Yeah.
Which is kind of crazy.
Mayor, if I, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that this is beyond public comment. My recommendation is that when we go to adopt the agenda, we add this as a discussion item, as K5 for business discussion.
Absolutely. Do you mind sticking around, Chris?
I, sure. I'm here.
We're going to add it, we're going to add it to our agenda, K5 at S.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, is there any more public comment? No more public comment at this time. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda adding K5?
Motion to approve.
A second. I have a motion from Councilman Burgley to adopt the agenda with K5 added and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye. Councilman, thank you, Councilman Collison. I was going to say, state your name and say aye, but you were way ahead of us, sir. I'll oppose. I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Approval of City Council minutes from January 19th, which is a regular meeting of City Council. January 19th was a committee of whole meeting. Also, January 19th was a goal-setting session and December 15th was a planning commission meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundeen and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
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 Dan Collison, aye.
Thank you, Councilman Collison. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Announcements, city offices will be closed Monday, February 15th, an observation of President's Day. Committee of a whole Tuesday, February 16th at 5:00 p.m. And a city council meeting will be Tuesday, February 16th as well at 7:00 p.m. The planning commission meeting has been canceled due to no agenda items. Any committee, council committee reports?
I attended the fire district meeting and we had discussion on the fire board purchasing the city-owned building that they're in. There's a, there was a few minor clarifications and Ms. Wood could elaborate more on what those were, but I think all, all in said and whole, I think it's pretty much moving forward unless she has some other information.
I believe the only thing that is left, that there was a request from the fire district to have it be a recorded document, thus there needs to be some reformatting of the document, but otherwise, there are no modifications requested.
Any other council committee reports? Then at this time, we'll move on to the business items. K1, resolution approving partnership agreement between the City of Isanty and the East Central Regional Library. We do have Ms. Rachel Howell. I did see her. There she is, in attendance as well. Ms. Howell, if you'd like to step forward. It's good to see you once again, ma'am.
And it's good to see you this evening, Mayor. Excuse me, thank you. Yes, I'm Rachel Howell. I am the Assistant Director for East Central Regional Library and I'm here for our usual annual recount, recounting of what happened at the library here in Isanty in 2020. We do this every year as part of the service agreement that we have with the city that we sign every year that brings library service to City Hall, just so everybody can agree that we're all still on the right track and doing what, what we need to do for the citizens of the community. Just as a refresher, East Central Regional Library provides library service here in City Hall one day a week, usually on Wednesdays. This works especially for patrons who can't make the drive to Cambridge easily or can't visit any of our other locations and by bringing the service here to the community. As I'm sure I don't have to tell all of you, 2020 was not the year we were expecting last January. The pandemic threw everybody for a loop, but I think we rebounded and managed to provide service nonetheless. So when, when COVID first came upon us last year and it became apparent that we needed to close, we closed all of our locations by mid-March. By the end of that month, though, we had restarted a remote phone service to at least start to be able to provide assistance to our patrons throughout our region. So we were helping with folks who were calling saying, is City Hall in this and such a place open? What about the restaurants? What about hospitals? What's going on? We were answering questions like that all day. We were also answering things like, is it safe to eat a can of tomatoes that's dated Because people needed that information. We also really beefed up our online resources. We added live, online tutoring help for homework as well as job assistance, so resume review and things like that. We also really beefed up our other electronic resources so that people could read eBooks on their devices or listen to books that way. By April, we were starting to offer curbside pickup. So you don't have to go into a building, you can drive up to the building and have your materials brought out to you, put in the trunk of your car. We all get to stay in socially-distanced manners, but we're still providing service. We were able to start that curbside service here in Isanty by June. Tim was able to start making trips. He would sit in the, in his van on the other side of the building and provide contactless pickup service for the residents of Isanty. He started initially with 30-minute visits and at this point in time, we're up to two hours a week. As we were able to start getting back into our buildings with our partner cities, we were following any of the social distancing guidelines that the cities were following plus best practices that the Department of Health and the federal CDC were putting out. So we adjusted the number of people that, that we could feel comfortable having in the library room here in City Hall to keep everybody safe. And when City Hall had to reclose to the public walk-ins, we took our service right back out to the curb so that we could keep everybody safe. And so now that your building is back open again, Tim has come back into the building. I think this really exemplifies the very best of the community and intergovernmental partnerships that we have between the library and the cities because we've all worked together to make sure that the residents of Isanty get the library service that they need. Even with all of that craziness last year, our statistics show that library usage was consistent with what we were seeing in the previous year. We were here for 38 days in 2020. That's down about 11 days from the number of days that we were here in 2019. So that's not horrible. Would we have liked to have been here every week? You bet, but I'll take it, given the craziness of last year. We served about 900 people who were able to come and make use of curbside service or in the building service once we were able to do that. Again, that's pretty good and I think we were able to really offer some good service to the folks who came to visit us. So all in all, I think from the library's perspective, this remains a very successful partnership. And I want to say thank you to the city for working with us for more than 10 years to help us bring library service to the citizens of Isanty. And I look forward to another fruitful year.
We thank you as well. I did have a couple of residents asked to do puzzle swap.
Sure.
Which I did ask Tim and he was really receptive. He said he was going to call you, I believe, and, and he called you and.
He has, he has not yet, but that's just because our paths haven't crossed.
Okay.
But I am more than happy to work with him, Tim, to figure out how we can best make that happen here, absolutely. Because it is a very popular service that happens in a number of our other locations, so it would be right in line.
I don't want to get him in trouble, but I think he's doing it.
It's okay. It's, it's okay.
The residents are loving it because I see a gal every Wednesday. She walks from her home on Main Street all the way to this library with puzzle in hand and I've seen her two weeks in a row now, so.
We are, we are happy to do it.
You guys have done a phenomenal job, so thank you.
You're welcome. I would be happy to answer any other questions, but other than that, that concludes my presentation.
I make a motion to approve.
One second.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Lundeen and a second by Councilman Collison. Any other discussion? We're good?
Great job.
Yep, thank you. You did a good job.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Dan Collison, aye.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Collison. Motion carries five zero. I know, right? We'll go on to.
Great work.
I think you're enjoying this conference call a little too much there, Councilman Collison. Let's go on to K2, the resolution, a policy of metal detecting on city property. Ms. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have, this was an item that was postponed from last council meeting for further discussion. I do have some input on this item from the public, a very nice email giving some explanation of what metal detecting is for her and also members of her group from a Ms. Nicole O'Connor. I also have some information from another community member who reached out. And then we also have Mr. Oliver, who is here to share a little bit about it. I'm going to pass out some materials that he has brought. And so I think at this time first, we'll request Mr. Oliver maybe to share a little bit about.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium. Did one of you gentlemen contact me?
Um, hi.
You did.
Chris.
Okay. I was going to say, I was hoping one of you came up here.
So my name is John Oliver. My address is 25802 Apollo Street, Northeast Stacy, Minnesota. Stacy sounds like a long ways away, but I'm just east of the Green Barn. Grew up in this town, went to elementary school, middle school, kind of stayed around here. Drove for the county for a few years, for the Sheriff's Department, and then now we look for people on a private group, you know.
If you want to, you can remove your mask while you speak, sir.
Thank you.
Little, little easier to understand you.
Well, I appreciate it. It's a, I purposely made this bigger so I wouldn't have to wear my glasses and fog them up.
You can, you can use Councilman Burgley's if you'd like.
No, that's all right. I got long arms. But, so Nicole asked me to read the letter she sent through and I'm sure you, you have seen the letter that she sent across.
This mayor did go out to email to all council members.
Yeah.
Yeah. But Chris, just met Chris as we walked up to the door. There's a lot of metal detector people in the, in the state and unfortunately, I always thought I'd never be that guy walking on the beach, chasing down the sand, but here I am and I'm addicted to it. I used to be addicted to the hokey pokey, but I turned myself around.
Ta-da-ta.
Up here all night. So, so I'll go and read her email here. And if I stumbled through it, I did go to Isanty, so forgive me. So metal detecting has been a hobby. I picked up four years ago. I get asked if I'm finding any treasure when I'm out. I always say I am, however, my definition of treasure may not be the same as yours. Treasure for me is a, is a long-lost toy car in the ground, axe heads, bullet casings, pocket knives, a key, good-for-five-cent tokens, horseshoes, any remnants of objects that no longer exist. We, we like to recover lost items and try to imagine long-forgotten people who dropped, dropped it there. My fellow detectorists share a deep appreciation of history, our ancestors and, and the communities that settled long ago to pave the way for us now. Believe it or not, we are actually quite a tight-knit community of detectorists in Minnesota. It's a really great Facebook group of amazing, helpful people. Minnesota, Metal Detecting Minnesota Group follows a strict code of ethics they always follows. Number one, I will always seek and gain permission on all private property before detecting there. Number two, I will observe all laws, whether national, state, local, and will aid law enforcement when, whenever possible. I will leave all gates, doors, and any other means of entry as I found them. I will not contaminate areas such as wells, creeks, rivers, lakes, or, or any land. I will replace any and all excavated ground to its original look as to leave little or no sign of my presence. I, I will not tamper with any posted signs, structures, or equipment. I will report the discovery of any possible, or of any item possible historical significance to the proper authorities. I will report the discovery of any dangerous items such as, but not limited to weapons or lethal or toxic items to the proper authorities. I will not, I will never detect in, in an area considered historical near landmarks of significance or cemeteries. I will always respect my fellow detectorists by never revealing their search locations and without prior consent to do so, I, I will respect and keep private any information my fellow detectorist asked me to do so. As a detectorist, I will be judged by example and, and will always conduct myself with courtesy and consideration for others. I will be helpful and informative when I, when I can be and respect the feelings and rights of others at all times. We are, we are adamant about our digging methods. We are practiced to perfection so you can't tell the ground was ever disturbed. All this is crucial to keep enjoying this hobby. If not followed, we will get banned. It's the last thing any respectable detectorist wants. And then there's a picture of the plug method sheet and the slit method sheet, two different ways of cutting the ground to make sure that the ground heals itself in short order. And then it goes on to say, while change is inevitable and necessary, it's still sad when places and land are bulldozed. We simply are just trying to preserve what we can before development. The individual who brought, brought up the subject of metal detecting on a certain city property was simply following our code of ethics and so, and do so before it's too late. I assure you, in no way are we seeking anything of monetary value. The wish is to, or wish to take anything of historical significance and definitely not digging anything near six feet down. Generally, it's averaging six to eight inches in depth. Naturally, we get called upon to find lost items. These, these items tend to be very dear to their owners. A lot of times, there, there will be people who lost, who post on community sites asking for help locating something lost. When members see those posts, they go on Metal Detecting Minnesota, asking if anyone can help this person and get them connected. It's an amazing feeling when you're successful. When a ring is found personalized and personalized, we can track down the owner, class rings, wedding rings, and most with a great deal of sentimental value get returned after any number of years. We are just happy to return those items and doing what we love and don't wish to be compensated. The longer an item has been lost, the longer it may be to find, many trips taken. So then there's a picture of a ring returned. With the help of Minnesota Metal Detecting, Metal Detecting Minnesota Admin, a couple of years ago, I started a women's club, and, and I'm reading this for her, so I didn't start it myself. I started a women's club that meets once a month each season, being I grew up in Isanty County area. I've hosted 90% of my meetings here, Cambridge City Park, Riverside Schoolhouse with permission from Sam Clocksine, head of Isanty County Historical Society. Cambridge City Park, Riverside Schoolhouse, with permission from Sam Clocksine, head of Isani County Historical Society. And private property I obtained permission from, to name a few. It has been a, a very enjoyable to make friends, uh, with the same hobbies. In the last year with the riots, it also provides us with more, uh, peace of mind hunting in groups in terms of safety. I can say that my girls have enjoyed the lovely scenery of Isani County has to offer. Once the ground is thawed, we would be more than happy to have you join us and get firsthand experience. Uh, many of us have extra equipment, um, to share. So there's a picture of the ladies of metal detecting photo, and then a bunch of kids, um, getting coins from them in the river while they're trying to metal detect down at, uh, Cambridge State, or Cambridge Park. So, and it says, "I'll be honest, uh, metal detecting can be incredibly tedious. Eighty percent of what we dig is trash. Um, it's something, no matter how skilled you become with your machine, you're always gonna have trash. However, everything dug gets disposed of. People have no idea how much trash single metal detectorist picks up in a single season. Well, as a group member's example." So there's one picture of Kenny's tarp in that, that, uh, it's a eight-by-eight tarp full of trash about this deep, pull tabs, pop cans, whatever. But a lot of the metal detectors, myself included, if I take a picture of a find, I'll take a picture also of the trash, cuz I don't wanna give somebody the wrong impression that you just go like this and it just go jumping into your pockets. There's a lot of trash with it. Another one was from Randy, um, a picture of some trash. So, um, with that said, I really hope that you have a better understanding of this hobby and feel, uh, that many feel passionate about. Um, as I mentioned, come springtime, if you wanna see firsthand, I would love to have you. Um, thank you for your time. And there's a few more pictures, um, and then it, it was, uh, somebody returning a VFW marker he found to the VFW, and another one was Dan Farmer, um, went detecting on his great-grandfather's, great-great-grandfather's, um, property in southern Minnesota and found a axe head, but, um, but with that, I handed out some papers as well, and on those papers, there's, um, the first page is a picture of a older couple that I met while I was magnet fishing, and they said, uh, "Well, you really should go look for my watch over on the other side of the lake." And I said, "Well, I've got my metal detector in the Jeep." Long story short, went over there, found his watch, handed it to him, and that watch he had gave her forty-four years before, and it was a Rolex, an eighty-five-hundred-dollar watch. So, it happens all the time, um, with metal detectorists. It's not the money. It's, it's the joy you see when you get something back. Um, so with that, I don't know the whole story about Chris and his asking permission to detect, but part of what we do is, we don't get on land if we don't ask permission, so...
I did reach out to Ms. Wood earlier today. Uh, there was a gentleman that sent me an email that is a longtime resident of the city of Isani, and he had dabbled in, uh, metal detecting in our park, right on Main Street, and said that he found, uh, barbed wire, um, some nails. He said, "I unfortunately found nothing but trash, but I, I disposed of it all." So if anything, think of cleaning your parks up.
Right.
And I kinda chuckled at that for a minute, and then I kinda thought about it, and I was like, "That's actually not a bad idea." And I understand that it's a hobby. I've kinda done homework on this since Chris has contacted me. The only fear that I would have is in Legacy Park.
I don't even know where that is, and I've lived here my whole life.
Legacy Park is a new park in the city of Isani. When was that park put up, Councilman Lundin?
Two thousand thirteen.
Thanks, Ms. Wood. So in two thousand thirteen, Legacy Park was built, but there's a lot of Native American artifacts that should not be disturbed on that land. So that would be one place I myself would say, "No way." Uh, anywhere else, I, I don't, I don't see why, myself, this shouldn't happen. I'd, I'd like to hear from Chris as well. Uh, I was trying to explain your story to the council, and I probably fumbled a lot of, and left a lot of blanks, Chris, so, I appreciate you coming in, sir, and...
Yeah.
And reading the letter.
And I, and I, I can fully respect, um, your position on Heritage Park, is it?
Legacy.
Legacy Park. Um, and I would do the same thing, that that park should be protected, you know? Whether it's signage and word of mouth through another means, through social media or otherwise, but it's nothing that we wanna stumble into either, you know? Um, A, we don't...
I get the feel that you guys are pretty respectful group. I mean, here you have a Facebook group, and that you go by code of ethics for metal detecting is, in, in all honesty, is flooring to me.
And I don't wanna come up as any type of a spokesman or a ambassador to the hobby, because each metal detector knows that they should be an ambassador to, to the hobby, and if one fails, it makes us all look bad, so I'm not afraid of shame-based management when it comes to straightening those people up when it happens. But, and I, there's a lot of people like that. They don't want their own hobby ruined, but if there's anything that we could do to help you with signage or otherwise, we can help that way, too.
I appreciate it, sir.
All right.
Thank you for your time. Chris, if you wouldn't mind stepping up? Don't applaud yet, cuz you're next. I tried to tell your story on how you contacted me and what you wanted to do, and that kinda started the ball rolling here.
Yes. Um, so I did contact you. At that time, it was owned by another party. And then during the research, you guys ended up buying that property out, and that's why I contacted you, because there was really nobody else to really contact, and I didn't know really who to go through, so...
And I didn't put the face with the name or the name with the face, but, "Do I know you?"
Yes. We've met a couple times.
Yes.
And then, like John said, it's basically just a hobby. It keeps us busy, keeps... Now my five-year-old son wants to do, because I've brought him out a couple times, and it's just something that you can do with family, friends. And I don't know, it's just...
So, I guess my question would be to the council is, even if we mirrored this code of ethics in our ordinance? I mean, that's...
Yeah, that's pretty much an ordinance right there.
That's a pretty stellar code of ethics.
Why do you, why do you need to...
I was going over both those and looking at it, and I was like, "Did you guys already contact each other and figure this out?" But...
No.
Um...
I mean, I, I guess our, our thing was, is we didn't know how deep you were digging, which John has now covered that, which is six to eight inches.
Yeah, not six.
I was thinking six feet, like, geez, what are you gonna...
Oh, you know.
I mean, we didn't know. I mean, it's like I said, it's...
Like, it's not a bulldozer.
Yeah. That was our fear.
It's literally a shovel that's this big. And like he said, we take all of our trash, and that's what you usually find, but it's just the thrill of getting out and finding something. Like, I was happy I found some pop tabs. They were old, but it was kinda cool just to find, so... I don't know.
Counselor, you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Well, my, my concern was that, I think we got kind of drawn up something that said, uh... Suppose you wanna hear me. Uh, we had drawn up something that said if they find anything of value, they have to give it to the city or of historical significance. I mean, does that kinda defeat the purpose? I mean, isn't it, don't you wanna find something of value for yourself when you go out there? I mean...
You do, but when it comes to, like, something historically significant, significant, you'd rather have it go to the city, and then they can display that.
That's number seven on here, Councilman Gordon.
Well, I know that, but, I mean, let's say he finds a watch and he, he wants to keep, you know, he wants to sell the watch, or he wants to make a profit off of that. I mean, if he found it, shouldn't he be able to do that, or should the city be able to take that, you know?
John said that they like to find the owner of that watch.
Right, but I mean, let's say they can't, you know, I mean...
Still, if a watch has been in the ground for that long, you're not gonna get any money out of it anyways.
Find the owner of that is, you know, so a pretty slim... That's all I'm wondering, is, I mean, I don't think the city, yeah, it's on our property, but we didn't go out and find it or ask anybody to find it. I mean, shouldn't they be able to just keep it, or...
Well, I mean, I'm sure we'd like to see it. I mean...
Well, yeah, but...
Not saying we'd keep it, but I'd like to see it.
Exactly. And if there was a description and, you know, somebody posted, "Hey, I did lose a watch. I lost a ring." Um, which I helped a lady at Coburn's, because she lost her wedding ring two years ago, and was, ended up pushed into the snow pile, and I brought my metal detector over there, I think it was towards the end of the winter, and it was right at the bottom of the pile. And she was so ecstatic, but...
I think you would probably bring, you know, if you lost your ring or your watch, and you couldn't find it, I, unfortunately, they're gonna go to the chief and make a police report, and then if he finds it and reports that to the chief, lo and behold, he found the owner.
If I may, another way to, uh, re, reword that would be that the city would have the first right of refusal. That's something that I've heard of with other metal detecting, um, groups, that when they assign something of going on private property, something similar to what we had drafted and put in the pocket, is that that private, that owner has first right of refusal. We could word it that way as well, so then...
So basically, if it's valuable to the city, the city would pay for it?
Well, no, that it would be historical, that they would, they would have the right to say, "Yes, we would like that to put on dis, display." We'd probably put a tag that "Found by this person at this park" or something like that, and we would display it in our historical side, just throwing that out there. Um, but there may be other things that, no, there is no monetary value for that to the city, to the residents, cuz it is public land. We need to keep that in mind. Then it would be, if it wasn't reported as like a lost item or something like that, then we refuse the right to keep it.
I almost want the guy to come to my house and go in my backyard and see what he finds.
I'm down.
Chris, I'll do it.
The way that it was explained to me, the gentleman who I talked to, a lot of it is, is the joy and the, um, fun of the, the find, to find the things, not necessarily keeping it, although some things probably you'd say would be fun to keep, but it's about finding it, helping someone out, doing great things with the things you find.
I mean, could you think of that lady that lost that eighty-five-hundred-dollar Rolex that John found? Could you just imagine her face?
That's what I'm saying. I mean, if, if he finds that and he can't find who owns it, well, that's of monetary value. I mean, this, this, the way that we have this written, the city would be able to just keep that. Well, do you think the city should keep that? I mean, I think he found it. It's finders keepers.
If it was historical value, we should. Otherwise, I, I would agree. I don't think we should.
See, that's what I'm saying, is, I mean, should we clarify that, that, you know, if it's, and I don't know, maybe it's not very often you find something like that. Maybe it's not something that needs to even be worried about, but if you did find it, once you wanna be able to keep it, you know, I mean...
It's possible, but, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. As long as you two ain't afraid of each other, I don't know.
No, I'm good.
We're good friends. We go way back to like an hour ago.
Not even.
He's got jokes. I like John.
Yeah. Life's too short to be too serious. I'm gonna leave these up here. It's a bunch of cards. But if anybody here has, say, a great-grandpa's house that, uh, you wonder if there's anything there, I'll go metal detect it. You can have everything I find. Anybody in this room, and that's what we do.
So, to answer, answer Councilman Gordon's question, I mean, if you did find something that was significant value, and the city said, uh, "It's got no historical value. We don't wanna put it in our case. Finders keepers," you necessarily don't want that.
And, and if, if I go to somebody's house and say, um, you know, I do a lot of metal detecting on private property, say, um, I do a lot of metal detecting, and I've, I've been overlaying maps from the eighteen-seventies, and I, I realize this house is from the eighteen-seventies, and, you know, it probably has stuff from way back. Um, would you mind if I metal detected here? And the conversation goes on, that, "Yeah, this was my great-grandpa's house." So, okay, anything I find, you have first or futile. You can take it or not. I, I would imagine coins belong to about everybody. If you find a coin, it could have been through a hundred people's hands, but if you find a suspended clip for a, an old jacket or something, that only belonged to one person. And more than likely, somebody that lived in that house owned it. Could have been somebody visiting or whatever, but, um, but with that, I would like to extend that out, um, all jokes aside, that if anybody has any relatives' houses in the area that they would like to have detected, to see if any of their relatives parts of pocket watches, cap guns from when you were a kid, or, or your great-grandpa was a kid, um, you know, that type of thing, goes a long ways. And it, it does, doesn't have any monetary value, but sentimental value is a lot to somebody and some people. And when it comes to public property, if we find part of a pocket watch, I don't think there's anybody in this room that has carried a pocket watch in the last twenty years, or, or near that. Um, but if we find a new gold ring, you know, then it's, it's to the point of, if, if there's initials on it, we'll either go to the police, or we'll go to, um, social media and say, "We found a ring. If you can describe what it says on the inside, it's yours, obviously," you know, and that's what we do. But it's not like we all have day jobs, and we're not trying to make this our day job, you know, and get rich on the thing, but...
It's a hobby.
Yeah, yeah, it's something to, uh...
You have a lot of...
Unwind from the...
You have a lot of history in the city. Maybe you should have them...
Where he pretty should go is right on the corner of Fire River, Flyer, and it turns by the Gulf, where Commissioner Moore knows exactly who all that is. That probably dates back to the Civil War, too. And Shirley Oberlander's old property. I don't know who's living there now, but I wouldn't be a big surprise to find a foot lock right there.
I know what you're talking about. That is a very old piece of...
It is. I drive by it all the time, and I'm like, "Ooh, I just wanna go."
Yeah.
But...
It's probably for, I don't know, I don't know. I think it says nieces or something. I don't know, I think, but they're pretty private, I don't know. Yeah, there's, I don't know if a lot of you know, Isani was actually named after an Indian.
Yeah.
And so Isani's got a whole lot of Native American history. Come, farm, uh, kind of over nine sixty-five, there was a steel farm. My grandmother had talked to their daughter, she was very, very little back then. The Indians used to go there and use their sharpening stone to sharpen their axes and knives and arrowheads and, and all the guy that lives there. People are all hell of arms, or I mean, hell, that would've been an awesome place. I'm sure you would've found a lot of historical value there, but... I don't, first thing I come along with Mayor Johnson on this, I, I don't have a problem with it. I just don't want our first world-class golfers to be in there.
Well, and, and the reading material here, they're pretty respectful, and it was another thing that I was worried about was, are we gonna have gopher holes, or are we gonna, I mean, is somebody gonna walk through there and twist their ankle, but from your drawings here, you have pretty significant cut patterns and dig designs, and, and you try to put that land back so it's really not disturbed. I mean, you're pretty respectful about it.
In fact, there's quite a few of us that bring a little soil cloth that, once you flip the dirt back on that hinge of dirt, if you have to dig deeper, you dig that soil out, put it on the soil cloth, so it doesn't get intermixed with the grass, and it's so clean to go back in. You drop that back in the hole, flip it over, tamp it in, and...
Yeah, just like when you go golfing, when you hit a divot.
Yeah, you fix your divots.
A lot of, a lot of, a lot of golfers have, um, grass mix with some fertilizer that they replace where they hit the divot. Put the divot back in, they put some grass on it, seed in with it, so it does help bind it back together.
It's funny, cuz I have that in my golf bag when I golf. I did the same thing.
But, I mean, I just...
I always did.
I personally, I have no problem with it, and that, but I'm one voice out of five, so, you know? I don't know what the rest of you feel like. I, I don't care.
Refusal's a good idea. I do.
And Mayor, I do think that there has been other policies that we've done, and we've referred to the expertise of a group, and I think that this is a really great case of that, and I think, John, for coming and for Nicole's email, it's so great to have that information.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe one other thing that we would add to our policy, cuz it's got that liability stuff, but we could state in there that, um, that they must follow the code of ethics of the min, the Metal Detecting Minnesota Group. So even if someone comes to Metal Detect who's not in that group or a member of that group, they still have to abide by the code of ethics. And so then that list that he read, which is before you, would be something that they would have to do.
I mean, you guys are gonna follow the policy, but all of a sudden, somebody just starting and not thinking and just starting to do this, and all of a sudden they see this. I mean, I think we have to have some kind of notification that we know who's gonna be out there when they're out there, so obviously, these gentlemen are gonna follow that procedure, or their groups will, but it's...
Per se, if we let you on that property that we just purchased, Chris,
Yeah.
we'd like to know you were there.
Exactly.
Cuz if you fell into a hole that we didn't know about, we'd wanna, "Well, of course I didn't check in," or, "He hasn't been checked..." Well, last we knew, he was, you know? And we know to send the chief over there or his guys, and we just wanna... Liability's been huge, and I don't want no liability. I protect every taxpayer within the city of Isani with... Liability's an evil word in my mind, so I, if it's a liability, I, I try to stir the other way.
I get that.
So, I think the code of ethics to mirror that, I think, I think this is a great list of code of ethics. Councilman Gordon, I think he covered if, you know, it, it had value, or, I mean, they're not potentially in for the value if the city sees no historic value in that, I...
Well, yeah, I mean, I just think that i, in our ordinance, I mean, it should say historical significance and leave the value part out, and let them keep what they find. If it's, if it's of value, great, but I mean, if it's not of historical significance...
So if they can't find the owner of it, or it has no... So if they can't find the owner of it or it has no historic value to the city?
I think that the whole thing is great. I mean, I just, I just, if it was me metal detecting, if I found something worth a thousand bucks, I'd wanna keep it, you know, I mean, but then again, I'm, I go goldpanning in Colorado and everything I do has to have some kind of monetary value to it. That's just kinda, I just enjoy that part of it, you know, so. I've never found anything, really, but anyway, so, that's all I'm saying is that-
You're opening up a can of worms.
I know. I'm just, I'm just saying, I think, I think that, I just think they should be able to keep it if it's of value. If it's of, if it's historical significance, then give the city the, the first right of refusal. And if it's, and that's where I would end it, you know.
I think anybody, whether it's private property, whether it's city property, they should have that right of refusal. I like that idea, Ms. Wood. I really do. And if, if the owner of the property or the city says, hey, there's no historic value, there's no sentimental value, uh, finder's keepers. I think-
So what I'm hearing you say, uh, Mayor Johnson, is that we are not going to put in there if it's of monetary significance? The reason why I think that that was in here and that was taken from that, or used from the other city is because it's public land. I think that's why they had had that in there. It's not just private property. It's actually not owned ju- I mean, it's owned by the city, but it was paid by taxpayer dollars, which is why I think it has that in there. Now, we could follow a process of abandoned articles and do something different, like maybe gets held at PD for a certain amount of time. But we do have a policy on abandoned things. It couldn't, doesn't necessarily be in the ground. But like if someone leaves a bike at a property, goes over to PD and we have a process for that to see if it gets claimed. If not, you know-
I don't think these gentlemen have a problem with any of that.
No, I know. I'm just hearing two different things. I'm hearing one council member is saying that we shouldn't have it, but maybe we-
I think we need to follow our policy, but I'm with Councilman Gordon on-
Something like you said there, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
If they go through the process and nobody claims it or says that it was theirs or, you know, I mean, then that, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Nor do I. I mean, I, I, I agree with him. I think if they find something of value and you have that right to refuse it, whether it's public property, city property or, or private property. If nobody wants that, then it sits at PD, you know, for however long that it needs to, and nobody still claims that, well, then he found it. He should be able to keep it.
Are we really gonna, are we really gonna regulate private property though? I mean-
No, this is only city property.
We have no say in private property.
That's my point. We have no say in private property.
Whatever they do on private property, this can't, this private property, we gotta keep that word out.
Yeah, that's my point.
Just city-owned property that's titled in the city's name.
What would be city or public property, right?
Yes.
It's city property.
Okay.
Yeah.
'Cause if it was county property, they'd have to go through the county.
Correct.
And a private person, then they can make that determination, whatever they wanna do with those gentlemen, their, their groups when they go there. So, that, we don't, we, we, private property is not a word-
Somebody's coming to my house.
My other, uh, Mayor, if I may, the other recommendation that I-
He's not home from, oh.
The other recommendation that I would make is that we know-
I got you, Councilman Collison. Just wait a minute.
We know that there's archaeological significance or importance over at Legacy Park. Um, I'd like to look into what other areas that we, um, that are documented with the historical site and find out if there are other areas that should be, you know, off limits. Um, and then if, if we find out if there's more, that would be added to the list of those are not able to be metal detected on.
There's so many Navy, Native American sensitive things in the city that I agree with, Ms. Wood, that give her a little time to do a little homework and then, then we can go from there. Councilman Collison, did you have something to say, sir?
Yes, I, I have a couple of comments, uh, things that I can say. Thank you. Um, I'm sorry if I, uh, sound repetitive. I can hear what the, the public is saying much clearer than what the council members are saying and the mayor is saying. So, I apologize if I'm repetitive. Can, can you guys hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, well, for starters, I was, I was, I'm impressed with how many people, you know, came forward tonight to speak on, on the metal detectors, uh, behalf. Um, this hobby has actually always intrigued me, you know. But I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak on the other side of it, um, just for a short second. There, uh, uh, been approached by a few people and the Historical Society itself, like Danny County. Um, and it, it's, it, it's a, it's a touchy subject and, and I respect it that, uh, most of you follow code of ethics. But I guess my concern and, and Historical Society's concern, um, is the people that don't follow that code of ethics. Um, and, and there's that sort with every hobby we come across. So, um, I guess my, um, there again, I respect your guys' code of ethics. But my, I guess my side of it is, I think everything should be handled case by case. And, and that, that is just the, uh, the feeling I got from the Historical Society as well. Is where, uh, people on city property as we're speaking, um, do metal detecting, it is handled a case by case process. Um, I know that's tedious sometimes, it, and it can be time consuming for our staff as well. Um, but that, that is what I, what I've gotten from the Historical Society from my Danny County, um, as well as, as my thoughts. So, um, you know, if anybody wants to speak, you know, speak, speak to that and, and freely, that's fine. But that's, I guess that's where I stand. I'm not against it. Obviously, if you approach a private property owner, that's, you know, I think that's on you and between you and the private property owner. But when it comes to city property, um, the Historical Society, um, and me, uh, believe that it, it should be handled on a case by case basis.
And that's kinda why we're having Ms. Wood look into Legacy Park and other parts of the city, Councilman Collison, to make sure that we're not disrupting, 'cause there is a lot of Native American heritage culture within our city.
Exactly.
So, a- and we'd have Ms. Wood do her homework. So if there was anything else that we'd say, nope, that's off limits to, which I would flat out say Legacy Park should be number one. Um, and if there's any others, Ms. Wood would find those and, and we'd have those in writing.
Well, you know, exactly. I mean, even Bluebird Park is an old historical farm site. So, I, I really think that, um, any city property should be handled case by case. Um, and, and so we can do our due diligence on our research on our end. 'Cause obviously, if they wanna metal detect it, the people that follow the code have already done their research by the sounds of it. They're very smart and meticulous about where they go spend their time. And that, and that's good, 'cause they're, they're, they're looking for that find that, that might, you know, make someone smile. So, and I respect that, but we, we need to protect our side of that side, you know, of the story. So, I guess, um, I guess that's where I stand, the council members and, uh, so.
So Mayor, um, what I'm hearing Councilmember Collison state is perhaps you wanna add in something that says something like this. City has a right to limit access to metal detect on certain areas within city property. So them knowing that there, we have restricted areas, just make that even more clear, perhaps.
Would that cover that for you, Councilman Collison?
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be, I think that would be a good compromise. And I think that Iscany, the Historical Society would, uh, would be okay with that.
Any other comments or concerns from the council? Ms. Wood, you wanna do a little more homework and then, um, draw up a proposal or, or an ordinance on this? And this can come back or what are we thinking?
So Mayor, this would just be a policy by resolution, I believe. So it would be, I can, um, modify the draft that was before you to include these items that we were talking about. The code of ethics of the Metal Detecting Minnesota Group, what I just said about limiting access and changing it to give the items to the city to the first right of refusal. Uh, then the other thing that I would need from council is who would approve this? Uh, would it be staff to approve and find out where they wanna go, approve the areas? Or do you want to go to council every time?
I think it could go to staff. And I just heard two of the other council members say it. You okay with that, Councilman Gordon?
Yeah.
Councilman Collison, you okay with that?
Yeah.
So, staff.
Okay, so Mayor, if, if you and council feel comfortable, you can approve it with those modifications and staff will just move forward. It doesn't need to come back here.
I make a motion to approve it then.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Dan Collison.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm grabbing somebody's card. I might have to card swap you.
I'll leave these right here.
Thanks, guys. We highly appreciate it. We'll move on to K three, resolution approving the preliminary plat for Fairway Greens North. Ms. Selman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Request by Home Pride Inc. for considering a preliminary subdivision and plan unit development of Fairway Greens North. This is the eighty acres that's located north of Kajma and adjacent to the golf course. Uh, what they're proposing is a hundred and sixty-seven single-family units. It'll be a mix of unit types, slab-on-grade, two-story, the, all the different kind of types there. Uh, they are, the PUD part is that they want to have a range be nine thousand six hundred square feet to the lar- as large as two and a half acres. Uh, we, we reviewed it under the R one and the R three zoning districts, 'cause that's what closely fits this. Uh, they'll be meeting setbacks, however, they are asking for reduced side yard setback of eight feet and a reduced rear yard setback of twenty feet. Uh, that's because there are a lot of wetlands and trees on this property. And there's also the, um, pipeline going through, so there's a lot of easement. So that's why they're asking for those reduced setbacks. On January nineteenth, um, the Planning Commission held a public hearing. No one was at that public hearing to speak for or against this proposal. Have not received any additional comments since that meeting. Planning Commission recommended approval and so does staff with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dan Collison, aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Resolution approving the preliminary plat, final plat, Iscany Centennial Complex Seventh Reararrangement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a request by the City of Iscany EDA uh, for a preliminary and final subdivision to subdivide fifteen acres of a shovel-ready site and do, uh, three five-acre lots. We're doing the preliminary and final subdivision at the same time. Um, this breaks us down into, um, three lots. We're selling two of them. We have a purchase agreement. We will maintain the lot on the southern end and it'll have, um, about a little over three acres of buildable, uh, area for us to maintain as a shovel-ready site.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin and second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Collison, aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Going on to our added item, K five. The, uh, food truck discussion. Chris, you can step up to the plate again if you wouldn't mind, sir. Does the council have any questions, comments, concerns for Chris?
Well, for Chris, I'm just curious why, I don't, I'm not clear on why we pay, we charge seventy-five for a background check and everybody else is charging thirty. I mean, I, I've done background checks and they all seem to be around the same price. Do we, do we just go through a much thorough back, more thorough background check or why, why do we charge seventy-five?
Well, I think Ms. Wood did the math on this and she crossed paths with the chief to find, I mean, my only concern is we have to cover our staff overhead cost.
Well, I get that.
To answer Councilmember Burgley's question, um, I don't know why it was set at seventy-five. It's been seventy-five as long as I've been here. Uh, when we discussed the ordinance changes, when we added mobile food trucks, we discussed the fees of that. Um, and it never really was brought up, that I can recall, about the background check. That was always in our fee schedule at seventy-five and I don't know the history of that.
Can I ask you, um, is there a lot of staff involved with that? I've done many background checks, you know, for my profession. I do some sports officiating. I get background checked all the time. Um, there's never been seventy-five dollars. And I'm not saying I go through a different one. Maybe, maybe I do go through a different one. Is there a lot of staff involvement with?
Uh, so I did consult with Chief Myers on this and the staff time is approximately twenty minutes from administrative staff over at PD and then ten minutes of his time. Uh, when we did the math, figured it in with their salaries and all-inclusive of staff costs, it's approximately twenty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
And then what's the cost to get the background check itself then? There's a cost for that too, right?
No, it's criminal history.
They use a database.
They use a criminal history database.
So that's it, the twenty-seven dollars?
Just staff.
That's just staff time.
Thank you.
So my question would be is, do we need to keep this on a peddler's ordinance or should this be a separate ordinance? I mean, they, as Chris stated, there, what did you call it, Chris?
Well, it's just, again, we're, we're, we're local. We're invested in our communities. We're, we're generally speaking, when you see a food truck coming to town, it's usually someone who's within a certain range of your community. Um, you know, as compared to, say, when someone comes in from out of state or someone comes in again. And I understand what, what Councilman Lundin was saying, that, you know, we do, we come in and then we leave. And I, I completely understand that approach. Um, but at the same time, you get agents from FedEx, UPS, speedy delivery that do the same thing. And they're not subject to a background check. They're going into people, or going to people's homes.
With a company.
But they, but they are going through a background check when they get hired.
Their companies do it, yeah.
Their companies do it.
Sure, sure.
So, but, but there again, like I said, I wanted to state this, is, uh, we have to look at consistency. And yes, you are getting a background check. In other locations, you go, how do we know that you did get that background check and you're not just saying it? And then we have to go check it. We're still spending time on doing this. You know, and my proposal is on this is, is that we do change that to a thirty-dollar fee instead of the seventy-five. Like, we're not, you know, we're not making any money on it realistically. We're not making any money on it. It's taking our staff time to do it.
And, and Chris, I, I think you know my feeling on this, 'cause we've spoke throughout yesterday, today. I'm for this food truck thing. I, I, I tell you, I would, I would probably be broken five hundred pounds if it were up to me, 'cause I would visit a food truck wherever I could and whenever I could. But that background check, I, I am one that thinks it needs to stay.
And, and again-
Lessening the fee, great idea.
Right. And again, we, I, I can, and I don't pretend to speak for the entire industry, but I can tell you from the people that I've spoken with, from our stances and association, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have an issue with that. Um, you know, the, the background check, it, it is a part of the reality of what we do. Um, yes, it's an extra hoop to jump through, but really, part of what we're trying to do here is to mitigate the cost to us. Uh, you know, the bottom line is, we know your community wants food trucks. Almost every community does. And the fact is, the food trucks are going to go where it's affordable to do so, where we feel welcome, where we feel like we're a part of the community. Those are the areas we're gonna go. I did a quick search again tonight. By my understanding, just from doing a quick public search, there's only one food truck that's licensed in Iscany right now. So, we're not, we're not circulating through here. The only one that I was able to find was Kevin's Euros. And that's the only one that I was able to see. Again, that's just from doing a quick Google search and looking at the city's website. So maybe that record isn't updated or maybe it's not complete, but based on the search that we've done-
Probably not, 'cause there've been a few food trucks, uh, over the COVID year.
Okay, so-
Not only that, we have the ones that come to the street dances. I mean, there's-
Do they hold the same license? He does. He comes six months out of the year and they're coming one night.
Well, he's saying he could come six months out of the year. He's not saying he has.
We haven't, we haven't served in Iscany yet. And part of the reason, part of the reason is because of the cost and the process.
Which, which kinda frightens me to think how many others are feeling the same way Chris is.
Well, how many, how many of those, how many of those food trucks that come to the street dance go through all this? Do they go through the same seventy-dollar background check and the same two hundred dollars per six-month fee?
They pay the fifty-dollar fee, right, Ms. Wood, for the street dance?
So the food trucks that we-
The street dance, those people don't return for that six months. They're there for one time for the six months.
Well, that's, but that's four, that's four nights, so it's still, what, over three, four months?
Well, it's four nights, one time a month, June, July, August, and September.
Well, maybe that's what Chris wants to do here too.
And that's, well, no, I, Chris, well, he could, but-
Right.
I mean, I'm sure he wants to be here other than Knowles as well.
My recollection, and I could check with our public services director on this, but my recollection is, we had food trucks at our street dances for years before food trucks were ever allowed. It is with our special event permitting process. To my knowledge, and I could be wrong, um, we have not charged them because we pick and choose who we want to come, for vendors, to come to our street dance to provide food at our event, that they have not been charged that fee because it's our event and we ask them to come and we say yes, yes, no, no. But if that did change, I, I'd have to look into it further.
I thought there was a fee. And the other reason I'll say that is if you remember during the pandemic time, I contacted every one of those people.
Actually, we have a special event perm application special for those food trucks. Actually, I just recall this. But it's not that permit. It's, it's, it's been its own permit.
Okay, that's, that's the point I was trying to get.
And I think that there is, I think it's fifty dollars per truck per time.
Yeah.
And they can choose which one, sorry.
I was just gonna lean on Councilman Gordon and say, you've been there, you.
I was just waiting for a second.
Well, I, and, and there again, when it comes to the food truck thing, I'm gonna lean over to Councilman Gordon, because he has had a food truck, and he has had it here. And, you know, we re, you know, when we discussed this food truck thing, because up to a couple, three years ago, we really didn't even entertain the thought of a food truck being in Isani. It wasn't, no, we don't want it type of thing. I mean, but, you know, when we just went through all this discussion, I've laid heavily on Councilman Gordon, because he's in that industry. So, you know, and I thought at that time, when we discussed the fees for your vending license for the food truck, you thought at that time it was fair.
Yeah, well, so first off, the, just to put the, the background check to rest, so that thirty dollars, I think, is a lot more in line with probably where you would see that happen, for sure. We don't require it, I don't think, for every employee either, right, with that? I mean, because I've had to have it where I had to do a background check for myself and for every single person that worked in the truck besides.
Currently, the application itself says that it must be completed for every representative or agent of the company or something along those lines.
So, I mean, when you're talking seventy-five a person, or even thirty a person, that, just that alone would be enough of a reason to not come to town, even thirty a person. So, so that would be something that I would say, thirty dollars for the owner, or for the person that runs the company, and I wouldn't worry about running everybody else through, because.
But here, if you can ask Chief Myers, he's here right now, if, is, is, is that time that you're looking for that background check just for one person, or is that for, gonna be, would be for, say, they have four people working in it?
That'd be one person.
So it's gonna take half an hour per person?
So that's a two-hour, yeah.
Well, but I'm not, I'm just saying, just run it for the person that owns the company, not for all the employees.
I mean, is it feasible for us just to say Chris is the one liable for the other three people working for him, but we background-checked him, and he's responsible for the other three? Is that feasible?
It is what council desires. I believe that when you have a business, let's say if we have, I'm just gonna refer back to something else that we have similar in the chapter two forty-five. If we have solicitors going door to, or peddlers, sorry, which one? Peddlers going door-to-door, if you have a group of them, unless they're minors, they, and we just do the adult, they each have their own. They have to fill out their own application, go door-to-door, they get a background check on each of those, not just the one business owner. So I think that our, our application may say for everybody serving, but I asked our clerk, and she said that we haven't done that. So perhaps we need to clarify that language. We've just done it for the person who's filled out the application, just one.
Yeah, and, and that was one time that I had that happen, and it was, every time I hired somebody, I had to go get a background check at the city, and, and that was more on a permanent basis where I was set up, but, so it was really a hassle. But I mean, if you have to pay thirty dollars per employee, that's ridiculous.
I, I personally think this shouldn't be under our peddler's ordinance.
Yeah.
I think this should be a standalone ordinance.
It is different, yeah.
Because it is different, and there should be different things we should or should not require him or any food truck to do, that are gonna be different than a peddler.
Yeah.
They're two different things.
Yeah, they are.
So that's why I'm, I'm, I know we attached it to that, but I don't think we should have.
Yeah, but that would be the first, first thing on that, is that thirty dollars is a lot more reasonable, and then it should just be the person that runs it, and not every single employee, because.
And then he's liable for everybody else.
Yeah, I mean, if the guy that runs it isn't a problem, and whoever he's gonna have there working it is.
More than likely not gonna be a problem as well.
Right.
Yeah, in a, in a food truck environment, we're able to take a pretty hands-on approach and keep a pretty close eye on our staff. Most food trucks, you're gonna have maybe one additional staff member. You might, for a very busy event, have up to two. I would, I, most food trucks are gonna have a maximum of three people on their truck at a time, and you're all confined within, depending on the size of your truck, sixteen to seventeen-foot kitchen. So I can tell you as an owner-operator, I can watch every single thing that my staff do while I'm on the truck. I have no problem taking responsibility for that, because I know what happens within my kitchen.
I guess I, you know, like, uh, this Councilman calls, calling, I'm sorry, can't, can't be there today. But what, what Chief Meyer was saying, that, that, but I believe what he had said, the seventy-five-dollar charge for background check is for the owner of the business? Correct me if I'm wrong?
You're right, but the actual cost that that is costing the chief and his staff is twenty-seven dollars and some change. But we're charging seventy-five dollars, Councilman Collison.
Okay, so I won't have a problem with dropping that cost, but the problem is that it's just for, I guess, for the one person, and we're leaving it up to the business owner, you know, to check the background of his employees, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess, it's kind of like, kind of like the last discussion we had was, you know, and I, and I'm a huge food truck lover. But it's like, kind of the previous discussion we had before it met over there, there's, they have a code of ethics, you know, but we can't control everybody. Because not everybody follows that code of ethics of doing their complete background checks to their employees or what have you, you know? I guess that's my big concern, you know, and this, and, and kind of goes back to that, you know, one bad apple, like you had said before, the previous comment in the public opening, that, you know, can, can make a, a lot of you guys look bad, which, you know, I disagree with. But we, we, I guess my main concern is doing what we can to protect our citizens and still have you guys come here and serve our residents at the same time. And we, I guess we gotta meet in the middle somewhere and still do our job as protecting our citizens, so.
Well, I think we need one standard policy. If we're gonna do this to a food truck that comes in more often than the street dances, if we're that worried about the residents, then we should shift this onto the street dances as well. I mean, that's, you know, there's a lot of, when you have a food truck, you're not gonna have a whole crowd of people like they do downtown. I mean, you, you might be, I'm not saying you're not gonna have a lineup or something like that, but I'm saying there's more people downtown when we have a street dance than any other time. They have more, I would think they'd have more opportunity than a single food truck sitting out at Thunder, Thunderbergs.
Thunder Brothers?
Thunder Brothers.
Yeah, Thunder Brothers.
You'd be amazed, Councilman Burgley.
Well, I'm not saying.
At the following these food trucks get.
Oh, no, I've, I've been by food trucks that have a following, but I'm just saying, you're still not gonna get the crowd that, I don't care how big.
No, you're not, you're not gonna get eight hundred to two thousand people.
On a, on a, on a street dance.
Yeah, I know.
And so I would think there's more susceptibility of, of abuse, as if we're worried about some of the bad background down here at the street dance, than a single truck sitting out at, at the, at the brewery. That's my feeling, no matter. So I think we should be consistent across the board, rather than saying, you're away over there with, with mostly adults. I mean, I don't think, I wouldn't bring my kids, young kids, over to a brewery. I mean, you know, I'd bring over to the coffee shop, but it's owned by the same people, but not the brewery, you know? And so I would think it'd be mostly adults over there anyway. Not that you can't abuse adults as well as kids, but, you know.
Well, you know, the parents could go have a beverage while the kids eat.
Here's what I propose, is that, go ahead, Dan, were you saying something?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, but you, you kind of, Councilmember was broken up there, or on my end anyway, I'm sure you can just fly on that. Um, so, like, I, I believe what, I, I, what I think was, what Councilman Burgley was saying, so let's say Thunder Brothers, or Winter Greens, or whoever, a private company within the city wants a food truck to come in, do, do we leave it up to them to do, to make sure their due diligence is done on background check? Is that, is that?
No, what he, what he said, what he's saying, what he's saying, Council.
City property, we do the background check?
No, Councilman Collison. What he's saying is, we need to be even-kill across the board for, if we're gonna have a food truck at Thunder Brothers, and we're gonna have the street dance, we should have the same ordinances, rules, policies, call them what you will, for both the street dance and our food trucks.
Okay, 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 all right. I'm, like, I'm, I'm apologize, I, I don't like being at home on a, I like these topics, but.
Well, next time you'll show up then. Ms. Wood?
So Mayor, if I may, what I'm hearing, though, I think is maybe not amending ordinance, chapter two forty-five, which has food truck. I think I just hear you talking about the fees. That would be chapter one sixty, which is just a fee schedule for the City of Isani. Is that what I'm hearing, is just fee, just that, changing fees, right?
Well, my question is this, is why are we attaching this to the peddler's permit? I think it should be a standalone.
It's because it regulates what zoning and districts, it's very similar kind of process.
But peddler, but peddlers and food trucks are two different things.
Correct, and they're in their separate section, it's just within the whole chapter, but it's a, it's its own stand, its own section within chapter two forty-five. We don't call it peddlers, solicitors, food trucks, all within one big blanket, they're all, they're broken apart.
It's just the fee.
It's just the.
I gotta actually real quick, one other question there. Is there another reason why, I forget his name?
Chris.
Is there, that you set up and you've been speaking about food trucks?
It's Chris.
Yes, Chris, is there a reason why you want to take advantage of a whole six months?
Uh, I mean.
You don't reserve this time?
It, taking advantage of the whole six months depends on a lot of different things. Really, the biggest issue, the, or the biggest thing that it would depend on, honestly, is are we making money? You know, if we come out to Thunder Brothers, or, or another location, whatever it might be, and we're pulling in a ton of money, yeah, we're gonna keep coming back. If we go out to one of these locations and we're not making money, then it doesn't make good business sense to return. And, and I know that the, the mobile food unit application. Oh, yes, sir.
I don't want, I don't want to interrupt you here, really, but, oh, I mean, I'm gonna stop you right there, because.
But you are.
Because I've known food trucks to come in one night and do okay, but if they stay a week, they do well more than okay. So that's, I guess, that's, that's, that's my question for you, is what's keeping you from having a food truck come up here every, every weekend for a month straight?
Uh, well, honestly, right now, it's the two hundred dollar every six-month fee that we have to pay.
But if, but if you're only gonna come up to one thing at Thunder Brothers, wouldn't it be better financially for you to make advantage of that fee, come up more than one time?
Well, it is, the, the, the process, the application, there, there are multiple.
To come up here more than one time, we have food trucks that come up here for a week on end.
Sure.
So, I, I'm, my question is, why, I guess, what is, you, you know, why, why wouldn't you want to stay longer than one night or one day?
Okay, let him answer the question, Councilman Collison.
As, as of right, as of right now, according to the application that I filled out today, there are multiple variations of the license. There's a one-time for, I can't remember if it was twenty-five or fifty dollars.
One day.
Um, yeah, there's a one day.
Twenty-five.
There's a month-long for seventy-five dollars.
Yep.
And then there's the two hundred dollars for six months, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be, that would be the, the difference, is if I want to come to Thunder Brothers, and that's a decision that I'm working to make right now, is which permit do I want to apply for? Because if I am gonna keep coming back, well, then obviously it's a better monetary value for me to spend the money on the six-month permit. But there's no way for me to know upfront if I'm going to make that money, like, it's, it's a gamble either way for, for our business, and it's a business decision. So it's difficult to gauge that before you actually start serving in an area.
What are you paying under your other cities?
Right, you can ask a junior in search, that contact, maybe more than one business in our town. To see, hey, is it okay if I'm here from Monday through Friday? You know, or, you know, I mean, we have multiple businesses in town, I guess, I guess, my question is, what's keeping you from doing that? Contacting multiple businesses so you can be in our town for six months and make it worth your while?
Well, he, I mean, to answer your question, Steve, on the fees, I mean, I don't think those fees are necessarily out of line, but he's got lots of other places he can go where he doesn't have to do a background check. He doesn't have to get any fees, Forest Lake, for example, or Ham Lake, or all of those places, he doesn't have to do anything. All he's gotta have is his, his health license, and he's gotta move every twenty-one days, and that's, that's it. And so I think our fees, when we had originally discussed that, I was on board with it, because it was, you had a concern that, you know, the, the businesses are paying taxes for their property, and when you let the food trucks come in, you know, they're not really paying those, those property taxes or anything like that. And, and, and I would make the argument, and I'm sure, sure Chris would too, is, well, that business is paying property tax, I'm sitting on their property, and I'm providing a benefit to that business. So, so that would be the argument for why you'd want them to come in, because, you know, I mean, I've rented from lots of places, and you pay, you pay usually, I mean, unless like Thunder Brothers, they're probably having them come in, because they want the traffic. So it's, he's probably not paying anything for that, but.
Right.
I've gone in places before where I've paid, you know, eight hundred or a thousand, or even more, to sit for a month on a property.
But my, my point was on that, is you do have restaurants that are here. I mean, how would you feel if some, if he pulled in his, his, his food truck, and he's selling pizzas, and he pulled into your lot, Jimmy's Pizza, and is selling pizzas?
Right.
I mean, that is why I was in that.
Right.
In that groove. Is we have local businesses that have food, they're not gonna have food trucks in there. And yes, the business like Thunder Brothers.
No, I don't think, and I don't think you're wrong, I'm not trying to say you're wrong.
No, what, what, what I'm trying to say is, and I don't want it to sound like I'm stupid, but it's the simplest way of explaining this, is when you lease a business, you don't directly pay taxes. You do in your lease, but it's not your lease. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
It's not like you're making a mortgage payment, and then you also have to make taxes payment.
Well, and they.
It, it's built into your lease, but you're not directly paying that tax as a separate entity.
Right.
If, if you wrote up a lease and saying, okay, you're gonna lease this property for two hundred and fifty dollars a month, but you're gonna pay five hundred dollars a month, tax fees for the paying for the tax of the property, that's understandable. You see that, but you don't see that as a lease. So if you own the building, your payments are X amount of dollars, five hundred dollars a month, and your taxes are gonna be five hundred dollars a month. You're seeing that differently. Do you, you understand what I'm saying? When you lease a property, you're not paying the tax on it. That's why I stated it that way.
Yeah, right.
So, so.
And your business pays taxes to the city.
Well, not necessarily, I mean, we do in the sense that we rent that space, and the property owner pays the tax, but.
Right.
Right.
He would not have to.
Because we've had food trucks that use their six months, you know? They, one, one week they might be at Thunder Brothers, the next week they're at O'Reilly, the next week they're at Coburn. I mean, they, you know, there might be a week in between they're not there, but they've been using that six-month up worth, and I just, and, and the community, it'll keep them busy. So I guess, that's my question, is why wouldn't you want to commit to a six-month? What's keeping you from committing?
Because he can go somewhere else and not pay anything.
He's explaining.
Right, I, I guess my answer to that would be, because I can go to a number of other communities where I'm gonna make just as much money and not have to pay two hundred dollars every six months. It doesn't make good business sense for me to spend that money when I don't have to. So again, the food trucks are gonna go where they feel welcome, they're gonna go where it makes more financial sense. When I can go to Forest Lake, or I can go to Ham Lake at no cost and make money there, it doesn't make good business sense for me to come.
And not come back for six months?
What's that?
Well, I mean, you go there for a day or a weekend, and then not come back for six months? You make your money and you go?
No, we.
I, 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 I guess I'm not understanding what you're saying. Are you there for six months?
Depends on the location. There are.
If you're making money or not.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Okay, yeah.
But, but they don't, they don't have to pay fees in those cities, Councilman Collison. So he can go there for one day, and if he makes his money, he could potentially make his money. Correct.
Yeah.
But if he is making money, he can, he can stay there, and he's still not paying fees. So, I mean, I, I kind of get both sides of this, I understand. My only worry is, is these businesses and restaurants within our city are paying city tax. These food trucks are not.
Correct, and that's why, that's why I, I think our six-month commitment is not asking too much.
Well, but at the same time, Councilman Colli, Councilman Collison, how many restaurants do we have in the City of Isani?
Not enough.
Exactly, so why wouldn't we entertain the food truck?
Because it brings a variety, and it. Be, just because it brings a variety, and it, it brings something new for that period of six months.
That's the point that I'm trying to make to you, so why are we nickeling and diming them?
So here's, here's, here's what I wanted to propose, and this could be, this, this discussion can go on for eight hours.
It could.
So here's what I want, what I want to entertain. I want to entertain that background check dropped down to thirty dollars. As Councilman Gordon had stated, for the business owner that applicant filler out, that fills it out. Yes, he should be responsible to make sure that he has legitimate employees. I can't, I can't be responsible for somebody else's employees. I just can't do it. Second of all, let's re-entertain the charge of the two hundred dollars to going to a year lease or year permit fee for food trucks. What's gonna be reasonable? We need to discuss it. It's not something, I, I don't think we can have this discussed in two hours. I mean, this needs to be researched, and I think, Ms. Wood, I'd like to maybe entertain to have you go out and do some checking what other cities are charging for that vending food truck. And I, and, and nothing against you, Chris. I don't want to use your words for it. If she finds it, she knows what the city's coming from the horse's mouth.
Absolutely.
And I would entertain that thought. But I would highly suggest to you that we're, we're doing this on your behalf at this moment, okay? And that, and I would suggest that once we do this and have a compromising situation for everybody.
You better show up in our city.
That's right. You better show up in our city, and you better, and you better bring some other trucks with you. I have absolutely no problem with food trucks coming here. I don't. I wanna be the, I wanna have this community where people are gonna come here and wanna be here.
I'm gonna be fat.
And I've had, I've had many conversations. People say, we need, you need to get another restaurant in Isani. I can't make restaurants come here.
Right.
But I can make it convenient for you to bring your food truck here.
Exactly.
But, we are putting a lot of effort. This, this conversation has gone on way too long, not just tonight, but prior to this. This has been a, an ongoing conversation for a long time.
Would you, with the COVID, this is all new territory for all of us. Uh, the food trucks have been, you know, a, a big thing lately, uh, in the last year, year and a half, just because of COVID, outdoor, in, outdoor seating, indoor seating, limitations. And, and I think it's great for any city you guys travel to. We love it. If, if you don't like food trucks, you, it's just un-American. Uh, I don't wanna pay you, but we, you know, at the same time, we gotta protect our citizens and make sure we don't let food trucks come to our state, and, um, um, or making it work one way or another, and, uh, that's, that's, I guess, that's, that's my last two cents.
Let's hope so. Ms. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. To wrap up the conversation, so I think that staff will be bringing back information on what other cities charge for their food truck permit fees as well as background checks, if they do them, how much they charge. And just to inform the council and also for.
Chris.
Chris.
Chris, um, if you fill out your application, pay the twenty-five dollars at one time fee, and should you come back and say, oh, I wanna do a six month, we have reduced that twenty-five fee off the two hundred.
Okay.
So know that, I mean, this will go on for call for discussion, which occurs in two weeks, so there'll be a leg before you, if something does get decided, before you see that come back and actually on formal action. But do know that we have done that for another vendor as well. They paid the one day, and they said, you know, I'd like to get this, I think it was six month, and it got taken off of that.
But I do, I do wanna, I do wanna say, I think that we should drop that background check fee to thirty dollars. I don't think we need to bring that back to call.
I don't think we do either. I, I'd be for that.
Yeah.
The, dropping the background fee is part of that ordinance, chapter one sixty of fees. Uh, we have to post it for ten days, which we can do and add it to the next agenda. However, if you want to lower the fees or have consideration of changing the fees for food trucks,
We wanna put them in lump sum.
It's the same chapter. You'd have to do it again.
Yeah, then, then wait. Then wait.
Let's, let's put it on one, one lump sum fee. And if, and if by chance that, I mean, I'm sure we're gonna go through with that, and if he does pay that seventy-five dollars, I think we can maybe revert that into paying for the future food truck fees.
Well, hold the check. Hold the check. Cash it when it's checked.
No, you know what I'm, you know what I'm, you know what I'm saying, Ms. Wood, don't you? It's just like she said, the twenty-five dollar fee for the one day application. And then you decide you want the six month, take the twenty-five off of whatever the six month fee, and same could be done with the background check, so you can proceed further with the background check. We can apply that towards if you were going to go further or whatever.
So, so, I get what he's saying. So just proceed as normal right now, and if anything changes, you know, we're not afraid to turn around and say, Chris, we owe you this, or, or it can be applied to your permit, or we'll take care of it, no worries.
And I appreciate that, and, uh, to your earlier point, Councilman Lindin, I do plan, as long as, as long as it makes financial sense, I do plan to spend a considerable amount of time coming up to Isani. Like I said, it's a short drive for me, so it works out well. I love the town. Um, we, we've actually spent a considerable amount of time at Creamery Crossing for their fish fry during Lent. Um, so we, we come up here quite a bit, um, and I can tell you personally, I have several other food truck owners as well as other board members who are currently awaiting text messages and calls from me based on how tonight goes and based on how our discussion goes. So there is a lot of interest from a lot of different food trucks. Uh, a lot of different business owners are very interested in this, so I really appreciate you guys taking the time to, to hear me out tonight and to address this issue. I know it's a big issue and I know it takes time, so thank you very much.
Thanks for calling.
Well, I think, I, I thank you for, uh, coming in person today, and, you know, I mean, I apologize, I couldn't be there, but, yeah, I, 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 I welcome food trucks. I don't have an issue with that.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I just wanna say that I still think that we should go across the board with the street dance and the food truck. It should all be on the same.
That's where you're doing.
Okay, I'm just letting you know, yeah.
We'll, we'll discuss that, and we'll keep that, that point in mind as well.